Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Regular meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Education is now called to order. We do have a call. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'd like to add something to the agenda. Item 9D under item considered for approval, educational leadership. Those in favor, let us know by raising your right hand.
Motion carried for five votes. Now may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
The President asked me to approve the revised agenda as stated.
It has been moved to second. That means approve the revised agenda as stated. All in favor, let us know by raising your right hand. Motion carried for seven votes. Ms. Davis, may we have our recognition's keys?
I have recognition.
Thank you, thank you very much. Reverend Abner is an Associate Minister at the First Baptist Church. He's minister of the First Baptist Church Pike Road. Reverend Abner, we are absolutely happy you're with us and thank you very much.
Let us pray. Great God, our Father, Thou who hast been our dwelling place throughout all generations, Thou who teaches us how to struggle and life burdens bravely meet. We thank you now for this day. We thank you for these moments of fellowship. We ask now, O God, that you would shower us with your favor, that we might have dialogue, that we might have understanding. We ask now, O God, that you forever keep us mindful of why we're here, that we might fan the flames of knowledge before our young children. We ask, O God, when we are removed from this place, that you would keep us until we meet again. Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much.
We know a lot of the success that we're able to realize in our district is through our partnerships. And one very valuable partner that we have is the Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce. They play a big role in our career academies and career tech programs. But one of the most visible and largest projects that they perform for us is the annual school cleanup project. And they are going to be recognized for that this evening. Joining us tonight from the Chamber is Bonnie Evans. She's the Senior Manager for Community Development. Bonnie, would you please come up? This is the sixth year the Chamber through its school facilities task force has worked several weeks leading up to the opening of schools, to paint, to prune, to do landscaping, and to get our schools shiny, bright, and in tip-top shape in time for the first day of school. This year, more than 700 volunteers from businesses, churches, organizations, colleges, just throughout our community were organized and mobilized by the Chamber to perform these cleanup projects. And they've done everything from painting classrooms and hallways and laying pine straw and trimming bushes and growing anything else that I've forgotten there. But anything that you can think of that makes a building beautiful, they performed that once again for us. And like I said, this is the sixth year that they have done that. And we're deeply appreciative to them for the work they do. So if you rode by a school before the start of school, and I'm pretty sure that work is still holding out even now, we're less than almost a month into school, but you'll get to see their hand to work. But we want to thank them for their contributions.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. We're ready for a schedule. Officer Brown?
Just got here in town.
Thank you for some of the things that I have noted and other parents have noted and called me about it. And thank you for some of the things that you've done to make their children feel better in school and do better in school. Now, the one thing that they have questions on that we're supposed to meet on next week, they have questions about that breakfast program. I didn't really talk about it too much because I really didn't understand it too much. I did say that according to one of the statements that they made that I disagreed with was the fact that they were saying that the students were going to help them serve the breakfast. And they didn't go for that too well with students helping to serve the breakfast. We were still, and I brought it up at city council, and I will stay on their backs about that, about the children walking in the street going to hang a robe. I will get with one of the members later on and we can see what we can do about that because I do believe that something can be done about that. But the other things that they have questions on, I won't be able to answer those questions until the end of this nine weeks. So I appreciate you giving me the time tonight to get up and talk. I do need information on that breakfast program. I do need to understand it a little better because I do not like to give out incorrect information. So if I can get some information on that, I would appreciate it. And I want to ask one more question. Is it possible for me to get a listing of who is over what students? That question keeps coming up.
Michael Ford?
Board member. I would like to get a copy of that and then I can make a copy and give to them so that they will know who is what and what they need to do. I thank you so much and I think that you are moving in a good direction. Thank you.
I believe Mrs. Salter can give you that information about the board membership. And we can also give you additional information about the breakfast program to correct some of those misconceptions.
I appreciate that.
It's good to present it to the board again, too, so lots more time.
There are no citizens comments. We move to item seven, receivers information.
Mr. President, Superintendent Ford, thanks. Last Thursday, Mr. Ziegler and I met with the Superintendent and with Ms. Perkins and went over the proposed separation agreement that the superintendent has by Pike Road, made some changes, and everybody agreed on those. As soon as the meeting was over, we adjourned here and Mr. Ziegler and I met with Doyle Ford and Miss Pope and gave them back our draft. We're now waiting to get something back from them. So I mean, I guess the night that we can properly finalize this within the next month. So we will give them back a proposed agreement to you for approval. Mr. Ziegler, when he was here last Thursday, told Ms. Thompson, she's not sitting here since he was hired and he was near the limit. We need to extend that contract. Obviously, we have no idea what, whether we drive the ship, how much time Pike Road takes, that's what it will be. So we didn't have to come back. We thought that you extended up to $15,000. And I think we bought that $29,000 that he had time to spend. And she submitted his item as of today, he had $32,247.50 and took a 10% discount or that. So he got $29,000 in time that he is, that's the balance of time will be depending on what it takes to finalize the Pike Road agreement. And obviously, there is the time up to, you know, the start of June 2018 when we see Pike Road is reduced. Is there any other question?
My question is, what makes it important for the mission to deal with the contract for the separation agreement? In other words, when you were hired initially for the separation agreement, do you understand that it wasn't hired at that point in time? Do you see this thing through or are we finding ourselves now?
When he was hired on an hourly basis, when he was initially hired, and that's what he's built on, on an hourly basis. And I think that if I recall, he was put in, he was hit by Skype. And he said that he quit us on an hourly basis and he gave you a reduced hourly rate.
Do we have any idea then in terms of extending, how long, how much, with the extension, would this then take care of satisfying the amount of time needed for, let's say, conclude that which is in place now to respect to that separation agreement?
Ms. Fordville, in answer that, all I can tell you is that, even Mr. Ziegler and myself, we're not driving the train. We have told him what we do. We do not know what issues or what else Pike Road may come up with. We've come up with an agreement that Ms. Thompson, Ms. Perkins, and Mr. Ziegler and I suggested some changes in. We've given those changes to Council for Pike Road. They are to run that back by their team. And we're hopeful that we'll come up with a separation agreement that we can all agree on. Then you're going to have to put that separation agreement into place as we get closer to the time when they'll actually start their student witches, the 15, 16 student.
I would just say, I think that we're being vigilant here in managing the money that the board originally set right at that limit. And we're coming back because at this point, we think we've handled most of the major items that are in that separation agreement. And we think it should be nearing the end, Mr. Fordville. But we have no way of knowing if that's the case. So we kind of put an upper limit there. We're expecting that probably will not be that amount, but that's where we are at this point.
We still have some tax issues to work out. We've sent back language that we were comfortable with regarding some of the district taxes and how that would be given. We've got to work those agreements out. We would hope that we're not going to have a lot more time in this area. As you saw in the paper, they were letting bids on their schools. So they're going forward with the building of their schools out there in the water. Hopefully, some of the issues that we originally were dealing with are off the table. We've still got, I'm sure we're going to have some issues regarding to special areas, some things like that, and buses and what have you. But all of that is kind of addressed in the agreement. It's just, God was always in his ears.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Chairman members of the board, you should have received the financial report. It's from the month of August 2013. On the cover page, you'll see lines one and two, total assets and other dividends and total liabilities and fund equity of $20,213,434.20. The unreserved fund balance was $11,604,744.48 and a total fund equity of $20,268,957. On line five, the beginning fund balance last October 1st was $21,209,118.40. Revenues and other fund sources year-to-date, $193,456,656.98. Total expenditures and other fund uses year-to-date, $194,452,340.82. So thus far this year, expenditures have already exceeded revenue by $995,683.84, leaving an ending fund balance on August 31st, 2013 of $20,213,434.20. And of course, we'll go back to line three, the unreserved fund balance. That's about where we ended last year with. And with one more month, we will definitely be dropping below that.
How much do you think we're not over that?
Well, in the budget that you just approved, I projected $9 million for not counting that million and a half that we'll get for the ARI funds. That's what I think will, about what we're going to do. Yes, ma'am?
Are there any questions for Mr. Ford? Thank you, Mr. Ford. And spoken by Mr. Smith on Bring Your Own Device.
Hey, everybody. This Bring Your Own Device policy, this is an operation plan that was developed by Mr. Smith for his school. It's a way to incorporate the use of technological devices, computers, iPads, any of your own personal devices, to use your personal devices in different instructional plans and other creative ideas that he had. When he brought me the plan, he of course asked me to review the procedures that he had developed with the IT department, and I did. Upon chatting about it with the superintendent, she thought it would be something good to do system-wide. So I spoke with him about it and we have developed this into MPS kind of operational plan to do this system-wide. We did incorporate his procedures. Park Crossing, of course, is going to be the pilot site because he thought of it and it was his policy. And we're just now kind of trying to take this system-wide. I have had a conversation with Mr. Dove about the capacity in IT to do this in other schools. He said that plans are in operation to get the other schools up to the capacity to be able to do that. So I want to let Rocky talk a little bit about what are his plans to do with this in the school system.
All right, thank you. As we were planning to launch Park Crossing, we had some ideas kind of come to us, myself and the technology department. Started with, they said that we have one of the most robust Wi-Fi networks in the county, in the public building, basically. So MPS took a step last year to allow teachers, to allow students to use their cell phones in the classroom for instructional purposes with teacher permission, teacher supervision. So I said, I would like to take that a step further and I want our students to be able to put their devices on our network so they're not paying for their data we put on our Wi-Fi network. So through brainstorm sessions with Don Dove and Steve Blair, we said, well, what if we expanded that and we allowed them to bring their own tablets, their own computers, notebook computers, laptops? So then we started researching processes that other schools and other districts have done and how they register those and monitor those. And obviously, teacher supervision plays a big role in any technology used in the classroom. So we came up with this plan, this program, where students register their devices with us, they receive the information of how to access our Wi-Fi network. And basically, it's just another expansion, as I said, of the cellphone policy where when we say get out your devices and look this up, they would now have a wide range of devices to use instead of their handheld cell phones in the classroom. A lot of this will be used in group work, in small group settings, where not everybody in the group may need a device. There may be role players where these people are looking up, these people are reporting, these people are recording, two or three devices might be passed around. We also have banks of devices in our school that are available in the classrooms. So if somebody doesn't, if there's somebody short, one group doesn't have one, doesn't have a device, we have those in our classrooms that are MPS provided where we can pass those out and they can use them. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. It's just a nice expansion of the capabilities in the classroom where students can bring their own technology into the classroom.
I just want to add, it's probably one of our more exciting and very important ways to interact with students and provide instruction in format that they actually love. So good place to go.
And I have to say, your school is definitely, definitely built for that because of all the open space that they can sit there and hold time. It's perfect to be able to share and have those little areas that you have.
Madam President, I just have one question on the rules down at the bottom. Number three, why can they not use their 3G, 4G plans? What's the difference? I mean, I don't know. I'm not.
Right. Our Wi-Fi has the filter on. So with, and most of your handheld devices that are bigger than a cellphone don't necessarily come with a 3G, 4G capability anyway. So we would rather them be using our Wi-Fi than their rostered.
Okay. So if they're using their cell phone, they just know how to not use their 3G?
Yeah, that's part of the education process is how to log on to MPS that way.
They probably know a lot better than you and I did in this thing.
Have you all been implementing that since school start?
No, we've talked about it.
The problem is, honestly, is I think he's been waiting on me. He gave this to me at the beginning of, the beginning of the year, and I've been reviewing it, but the conversations have been about, we don't, really don't want to just do this in one school. It's something that we want to just kind of think about doing across the system. So I had to revise his policies. He really just gave it to me for review, to give back to him for him to do. And I had to kind of go through a revision process to make it something that could possibly work system-wide. And I also say, if you review this right here, it's really not, it doesn't really outline all of the instructional things that he said with procedures. This is more of compliance kind of stuff in here. I think it's still being worked out because you haven't, we haven't kind of started it yet. So this is not a policy yet because policy is final, it's in the books, it's there. We're not even at the point to get to, get to a policy with this. This is merely procedural to just kind of see how to do it. And I will say this one thing that Mr. Dove told me, he couldn't be here. But he did say that if anybody had any questions about the capacity in other school system-wide, that he would be open to following up with conversations with everybody. I wanted him to be here because I wanted to talk about the capacity everywhere else to do it and why we didn't have the capacity to do it everywhere right now. But he did, and I think I left my notes over there. But he gave me specific instructions about what the superintendent, and she can follow up with this as well, what she had asked him to do. And I think there's some SIG grants or some money that has been trying to update in several schools right now to get them sooner than later with this capacity as well. But he's willing to follow up with those. Anybody that has questions about the IT part of it and what's going on in other schools and how do we get there and what he's been asked to do to do that, he's more than willing to follow up with everybody.
Madam President, I just have one statement. I do believe our student contact is almost a blanket of this procedure. I think we did a pretty good job. Did you look at that, Rocky? I'm sure you did. I mean, it's very exact, but I think that it's a good basic where this will complement and our policy will in turn complement your procedures.
That's correct. This basically refers back to the acceptable use policy and says that even though you're using any device that you might use in the school, you still have to follow the acceptable use procedures, you're still following the same penalties.
And that's outlining it. And then my question is, excuse me, if another school wants to follow Park Crossing and their school is conducive to doing it according to Mr. Dove, who do they need contact to implement this program?
My understanding is that from the superintendent is that she wants it in all the schools as possible, as widespread as we can be. I know she, and that she.
I think that we could have Mr. Dove give you a list of students that are capable of doing it because that infrastructure capability is an issue for us. And that's what we're working through. And even though we'd like it to be district-wide, that's a process that, as you well know, technology is something that State Department has been supporting for several years. And we use E-Rate funds to do some of the cuttings that we're talking about. And that's been held up right now as a preparation. So we are, we can give you those updates. And six schools we're looking at are South Lawn, Southern Rapids, and Capitol Heights having similar kinds of access points that will allow them to do that because we can use some of their SIG monies to do that.
Barbara, on that note, if we're looking at doing a bond, is there a way that maybe
E, update substitute teacher data? Reporting structure change?
I'm going to ask Dr. Boswell and Mr. Dyson to help me on this one because this is an area that we've talked about quite a bit. What we're doing here is similar to our council change that I did earlier a couple weeks ago with Ms. Hallway. What we're trying to do is reallocate the supervision of our custodial staff in the district to logistics. And logistics would be in charge of a centralized place along with their zone directors. If I met with the principal with the leadership group, the question that I asked him, and I think this might exemplify what we're talking about. I asked one of the principals, "If the custodian is getting ready to wax the floor, what kind of fretwork do you need to do?" And the principal said, "Well, I think you need to sleep, I think you need to mope, I'm not really sure." Then I asked, "What kind of machine do you use to wax the floor?" "Not quite sure." "How many coats do you need?" "Not quite sure." Now, this principal at the same time understands perfectly well when the building looks good, smells good, and things are clean. But the expertise that you would need to supervise the quality of the work was not there under that particular administrative team. At the same time, those administrators really need the more time to do the instructional leadership in the buildings that we're so anxious to improve and we look at. And I think under logistics, you don't get that quality that we're talking about as well as a centralized distribution of staff. That doesn't mean that the principals in those buildings will not be able to direct the custodial staff to set up things, move things around, or do the day-to-day kind of responsibility. This is really more about the supervision evaluation training.
So how soon would this come into effect?
Probably effective next week.
And who is the person that's going to be in charge of this? I don't think that you're not.
Well, Professor Martin here and Mr. Dyson, they talk to me more specifically than I can, but they have the two, specifically Mr. Dyson's department and Dr. Boswell is over logistics.
If I'm not, if I'm not in error, I remember Mr. Dyson bringing a plan like this before, which I, but what I'm failing to understand, and all this is good to put it under logistics, but that's not going to change the number of custodians. And the problem here is the number of custodians that we have and the number of custodians that have been non-renewed. And all that, the work, as Roger said in another meeting, work is still there. And I don't care how you change how they do the process, you still need the people there to do the work. And this plan, this is the same plan that the superintendent is talking about that they all tried to do several years ago. So plans are good, but if you don't have people to implement those plans, we don't expect our principals to know how to wax the floor. That's not in their job. So we do expect them to have enough people at their school to accommodate the children that are there, that are there. Because in the elementary schools, they eat breakfast, they're throwing up, they're spilling, they're doing all the things. The way it is set up now is humanly impossible and you can't explain it away. That if you don't have the people there to do the work, you can't, I don't care what kind of cost, it's still going to take the number of people to do the job at these schools. And one of the reasons, I don't know who told us this, but someone said they would try to have a male at the schools where they had female principals. A male at each, somebody said something about a male at the schools. Because I brought it up, I asked, "What are you going to do about the schools where you have elementary schools, small children, and you have two ladies or one lady to do all the work in that school?"
Yes, ma'am, where possible, and it's going to be possible in all the districts once we get this, or in all the schools, once we get it more organized. We're just at the groundbreaking stage right now. But for most of the schools, we have accounted for having at least a male in the school.
I know two you don't have.
There are, there are a couple that we haven't gotten around to leveling yet. But in most of them, we do have a male. And in some of them, more than one, especially your high schools and middle schools.
One of the things, too, is Dr. Boswell said, this is a process that they are just starting. And looking at where the custodians are, we also mentioned the itinerary in here that would come in and actually be hired to do some of the laboring things, what we're calling deep cleaning. And that's a process that we're looking at, including Mr. Porfil, you mentioned, but we'd be looking at that as needed and that's what we're doing. We're looking at that as it's needed, as it's needed in those buildings that might need more. But that's where we are at this point. This is about changing the supervision and looking at where we are in terms of custodians we have and the needs we have.
Dr. Boswell, who is going to be the supervisor, supervisors and how do they go to each of the schools to ensure that the buildings are being cleaned properly?
Well, currently, the custodians are supervised by the principals or the administrative assistants in the various schools. Under the new, the proposed new structure, all of the custodial responsibilities would fall under logistics. Logistics currently has four zone coordinators and a lead zone coordinator. Those four zone coordinators, each one is responsible for X number of schools. And he or she is in those schools throughout the month, taking account of supplies, checking equipment to make sure that it's functioning properly and giving advice on how to maintain those schools. Under the proposed structure, those zone coordinators would take huge responsibility in the supervision of the custodians in the various schools.
How the process would simply work is simply you would have the zone coordinators working with the school. You would have the group that would actually be cleaning the school, that's what the group would actually be evaluating on. You would have people during the day, during the day of superintendent dedication that would be more or less your day porters, that would take care of the yards and those kinds of things that happen. Here with this process, and again, I need to remind you, it's a process. This process will be strictly on the cleaning that would be done. The zone coordinators would be out during the evenings, working with them, looking at, as they evaluate the buildings, not necessarily evaluate the custodians, but evaluate the buildings using that as the tool to see how performance is going at that point for the evaluation piece. Normally what you're trying to get to, the point you're trying to get to is that each morning when you walk into the school room, school door, it's clean. You put it back together the next day, that evening, so that every day you come in, the building's clean. This would allow this staff of logistics to do this. Also with having logistics, that allows you to have the other staff that's in logistics to help out where need be. And that allows you to have more manpower at that point along with the itinerary. One of the things that makes this work is that if you're housed them in logistics and they're hired out of logistics, then you bring your itinerary. So that if I've got somebody out in this particular zone, then I can send someone from there to work there to help to make sure we don't lose a beat. Because normally what you're going to look at, if you're doing your process on a daily basis, then obviously if you're out one person, it's not going to miss that much. What happens is we're out, or if we're not doing our process on a continual basis, then it becomes hard to catch up. This will allow that not to happen and that's one of the benefits of having it work out of there. As far as the numbers, I can't speak to that, but the process would work with that way. And that evaluation piece, I'm sure would fall with Dr. Boswell, much like a principal would work with an assistant principal and evaluate teachers. He would work with his own custodial zone coordinators and evaluate the custodians for that building and that zone.
So you all have been saying all of that to say, the bottom line is, you're not hiring any more of them?
Yes.
Well, actually, that was a nice way to go.
Actually, we are because of the itinerary positions that we're talking about.
Is this similar to what was done years ago where, I remember a guy used to come out and tell me I worked, and he'd work with custodians in terms of showing them how to use certain machines. And he was keeping a record of supplies and types of, I guess, supplies.
Yes, we have. If you recall back, I think in the early 2000s, we actually did a pilot project on the Brubaker campus and in the Key campus, where those custodians actually worked out of logistics. They were scheduled out of logistics, evaluated by the logistics director. I was the logistics director at that time. It'd be something similar to that, where you look at the numbers, we have the schedules different, we work with the principals, we're able to get that through. Those custodians were still a part of the school community. It was not like they were a separate entity, if you will, but they were still a part of the school community. We would work with the principals, we were able to adhere to those needs. Accesses were reported through logistics. We in turn knew what we needed to do, if I needed to send someone from the primary over to the tech building. Same thing with McKee, we were able to do that. We want to focus on something similar to that.
That is, in terms of major cleaning, as opposed to the daily operation, cleaning and keeping the floors clean, classrooms clean, halls clean. That then becomes still, you know, we're looking at custodians have to be during the course of the day. So certainly, that's not going to impact that workload that's going to be there as to what those custodians are going to be faced with on a daily basis. Where we're talking about classrooms, hallways, bathrooms and things of that sort, as well as logistics. Those things are still to be handled by the regular custodians that are on that site.
Let me speak to that. I don't know how it'll be implemented this time, but prior to, how it was implemented is that the bulk of the custodians came in at eleven. You had one person that would be in in the morning, but that person got there in the morning, there was really nothing to do because everything else was taken care of. That person's job was simply to tidy up, clean the floors up, monitor the bathrooms until the crew would come in at eleven or so, and then you start the basic cleaning again. So you'd have that person in your building to handle those types of things because really, the major cleaning didn't start at that point. Because everybody went into a clean classroom because the classrooms were cleaned that evening, bathrooms were cleaned that evening. So this person, you know, you clean the store front, but everybody gets in, you push down the floor, just different odd things, odd things like that.
We think this is at least a step in the right direction to make sure that our buildings are built the way they should be and our people are trained and supported the way it also should be. And I said, we're not hiring extra staff because we're hiring itinerary. And those are people that are working those late hours that we were talking about that really can do that deep cleaning that needs to be done when the kids are out in the building.
Well, and I want to add something. I'm all about making sure there is toilet paper, hand towels, and soap in the bathrooms and that morning person could certainly be the one that.
That person would have no real sign too.
Yeah, but then, you know, I think back in terms of, you know, a child goes in again in the morning and goes in the bathroom, licks and rolls toilet paper, rolls it, throws it in the store. Or he may just go in there and turn on the sink, place a roll toilet tissue at it, both. He's got a big spill, he's got a big problem. Or some student comes to school that morning and he's sick or ill. You know, there are always some issues and things.
But there's a man, there's a person that's like that. And then the beauty of that also is, when you scare someone that early in the morning, if they're not coming in, and you know, if you're located in the school, then you've got to rush around to do that. All you do is call, he calls in the logistics and he can easily dispatch someone else there to take care of that morning.
It would, because right now we have gaps in that, in terms of getting support in our building. This would really secure that and make sure that we have people in buildings all the time to be able to send them some logistics.
I agree, you just got Wilson, we had two custodians out and it was a nightmare.
Thank you. And he goes, "Hold on right here, I work good enough by myself."
Okay, update on the substitute teacher data. Several workforces are asking about substitute teacher criteria, what we'd like to do in terms of the top of the student. We like to bring data back to the board regarding the criteria used in other school districts and what, how they're doing this and report that to the school district. We think that's a fair way to do it in terms of looking at the criteria that we have in place and what other school districts are recommending. And we would do that probably on the eighth, I believe, our next committee meeting. And that way, it allows you to really hear what other school districts are doing, looking at across the state, and also looking at if there are any things that we haven't considered. Does that make sense?
Yes, well, I hope one thing, you know, we changed the requirements in regards to those individuals that just made a poor service concern. The thing that I've been faced with, the fact that I'm getting called from individuals who have served for ten, fifteen years. And now, because of the fact that we have placed criteria whereby they must have two-year college. Now, those individuals, if they have served well, I think maybe we might want to take a look at maybe grandfathering those individuals in who has been within the system, done a good job, perspective principals, evaluations of the type of jobs that they've done. I think some consideration needs to be given to those individuals who've spent that quite a bit of time in the system as far as subs concerned.
I think that is a good consideration when we're trying to come up with procedures and processes to make sure that we include those substitutes that have been to our advantage to have, but find a fair and equitable way to exclude those subs that have not been as successful.
Well, you know, that's why I say the principal's evaluation. And certainly, you know, right now, they are not being considered. And the thing I'm saying is, yes, those who have done well, then certainly they could be grandfathered in.
You will work on the process, you provide, I'm sorry.
Well, I've talked to, and I've talked to some principals and some of the stuff that they have used, they have used for many years. They're satisfied, they're ready to write letters of recognition, what have you. And if you have something that's working, and I know they didn't have to get a notice, like somebody said, they didn't want, we didn't have to notice them. But some of the people that are substitute teachers, that's their own livelihood. And to just say, you know, don't even say anything or make a comment or announce that. Let somebody know that, you know, if you don't have two years' college credit, you can't substitute. We're not asking them to grade anybody, we're not asking them to teach anybody, we're just asking them to fill in a day or teach it with third lesson plans and be able to control behavior in that classroom a day or two. Now, I don't think you have to have two years of college. So we need to consider, we have got a practice around this board, around this table sometimes. The people that we need the most, the foots holders, the custodians, the substitute teachers, the mushroom workers, they're not at the top of our list and they are the ones that are out there with our children. So we're going to have some serious consideration and deal with some of these things with our heart and not with our head.
Madam President, I just want to make sure that these board members are making sure that these subs are subs that are going to be able to teach. For instance, as a parent, not being a board member here, I had a sub last year and in that class, my daughter did not learn the lesson. And that sub stayed for quite some time and almost still has, as did most of her class. And I know there's another lady in this room whose daughter looked at the same thing. And so it is just, I want to say that I understand what Ms. Waters is saying, but I also want to make sure that we have high standards and that we make sure learning is going on in these classrooms because that was a travesty what we went through last year. She still struggles and lacks to catch up with what she lost last year.
Two years, let's say, formal education, I'd say two years of young high school. What's person's been on a job and done well, ten years, let five years count for one and five years count for the other year. On a job, you're learning something. And certainly, it's going to be left up to the principals with respect to performance of those individuals. And certainly, I don't think a principal would have an individual come back to it not perform well. But if a person has been on a job ten years doing the same thing, then certainly, as she has gotten some experience in doing and knowing, if the principal says that this individual is capable of handling the job, then we ought to at least listen to the principal who's running the show and give us consideration to those individuals, whether or not they have the two. and give us consideration to those individuals, whether or not they have the two-year. We can grandfather those individuals in and allow them to continue to serve.
Madam President, I agree with some of what Mr. Workfield was saying. I think we need to be very careful and not use the word grandfather. And I think we need to look at our attorneys about that. Because I don't think that technically grandfathering them is the way that we need to label it. And I don't think that just because you've subbed for ten years doesn't necessarily mean you're a good sub. Because we even have certified teaching subs that have not done a good job. So I think that it needs to lie heavily on our instructional leadership in the schools.
Principal recommendation. Principal's recommendation.
You did too. But I don't think that just because you've subbed for ten years should give you...
Oh, no, I meant the principal's recommendation. I'm saying anyone on the job get here, you learn something just good there.
But I mean, what I was saying, I've talked to you, so I can talk live. What I'm saying, that on our job specs here, you know, where they don't have everything you think, or we put preferred, maybe we can say two years preferred. And there's a good sub who does not have the two years. Then we cover that by the preferred. And I like...
Does that work?
That's a great idea.
This is working over this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Consider for approval, the consent agenda. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, Ivan's A through F. Those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. The motion is carried with seven votes.
Let me ask a question here. The first thing that we have here on the consent for approval is capital plan. And I'd have to give, well, my answer is capital plan. And I'd have to do anything missing in regards to any capital plan.
Mr. Johnson?
Oh, that? In other words, the custodial reporting structure changed now to become the capital plan. Is that what you're saying?
No. Mr. Johnson, explain what you're talking about. Thank you.
Remember this board, on the last meeting, you received a copy of the capital plan I went over with you all. I do want to take this opportunity to make sure that we iterate, this is a document that's required by the State Department of Ed. And basically, this is a planning tool of which we look at, take an assessment of our needs for facilities. And we list those. It's basically, it forces districts to do the due diligence in developing a long-range plan, if you will. And if you look at this plan, you'll see a lot of things that would have to be done, you have the years in which we will do them. However, this is not nothing, hard fast, or steadfast, if you will. One of the classifications that they allow you is funding unknown. Because some of these things, you don't know how you're going to pay for them. But at least it allows you to see what are the major issues in your district right now. That you see what we have for 2015, things that we feel need to be done at that point. It may be that five years or five years from now, we'll see what needs to be done at that point as we look at, so we'll adjust that. And each year we adjust it, we know when one of the buildings is going to be approved, what a remodel will be needed, when a new site will be needed. The priorities will change as well. You may have a priority like we had the priority for the East High School, that was priority number one. Had we not been able to fund that project, then also, then you go to your next priority that you can fund. So all of this is contingent on funding, but it is what you send to the State Department indicating, these are what we feel are the facility needs. It's nothing that we're going to hold ourselves to, nothing that we're going to try to do. But this is what your operations department has looked at, seen what we need to do, seen prioritize those needs, and you move forward with that one.
Mr. Johnson, can we have another copy of that, please?
I have, yeah. It just reminded me, thank you for the clarification, Mr. Johnson, because I am aware of what we're talking about now. Just throwing, I was throwing, placing down.
I can see, yeah, I can see, I don't have one, I never have one.
Thank you very much.
Right.
Things have not changed.
Nothing's changed.
Okay, so you have that.
You have it, all right, yes, all due you.
Do you want to make a motion or can you recommend it first?
I need to recommend it first. I'd like to recommend the capital plan for 2013, 14.
Madam President, I think that we approved the capital plan. I second it.
And that's what they put in bonds, they're all there.
Okay.
Well, the, what the staff would say is, we have schools on that building, probably for about $300 million. No, we're nice, we're nice.
I've done a lot of plans I haven't...
That's what happened again. Um, amend?
No, that's, I would draw mine.
Thank you. It has been moved?
I amend, but you said...
I said, yeah. It has been moved and seconded that we accept the capital plan as presented with all of the options that are associated. Those in favor, please let it be known by raising your right hand. Motion carried with seven votes. Extension of the attorney's contract for Pike Road, may I have?
I'm recommending the extension of the attorney for the Pike Road separation work. I'm moved that we uphold the superintendent's recommendation.
It has been moved and seconded that we uphold the superintendent's recommendation on the extension of the attorney's contract for the Pike Road separation agreement. Those in favor, please let it be known by raising your right hand. Motion carried with seven votes.
Can we assume that that was for $15,000?
Yes, yes.
And that's fantastic.
That's right.
Up to, yeah, up to.
I have worked in lending the personnel report, which includes certified and support personnel minutes.
Madam President, I think we accept the superintendent's recommendation on the certified personnel minutes and support personnel minutes.
I second it. It has been moved and seconded that we accept the superintendent's recommendation on the personnel report. Those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand, please. Those opposed, those abstaining. The motion carries with six votes and one abstaining. Thank you. Mr. Gerbey?
Thank you very much, Eric. First of all, I'd like to recognize, first and foremost, the excellence schools that we have in the school system and the personnel we have. Whenever I talk to the media, I talk about the number one high school in the nation. We have a third of the top high schools in the state right here, among the other public schools. We have the number one elementary school here in the city. But also, we need to recognize and embrace that we do have problems and that we do have challenges. And I'm asking that we reach out for a partnership with the state, the Board of Education. So I'd like to move that we ask Dr. Weiss, State Superintendent of Education, to provide to this board his recommendations for an educational monitor, to move the school system to excellence, and also to provide the necessary support from the State Department of Education to accomplish this goal.
Could I add to that, Mr. Gerbey? As I mentioned to Board Member Derrick Dean, I think that this transparency is something that our school district needs. It's something that gives us that above-the-ground approach in terms of having somebody else come in and look at what we're doing and validate what we are doing correctly and what we need to move forward in looking at doing differently. So I wanted to say to this board and the community, I fully support this in terms of the transparency that I think our community needs as a school district and school.
If that was your motion, Derrick, I'd like to second it. It has been moved and seconded that we move forward with all the things that Mr. Dean said. On the leadership, education, and policy area. You might have to read it also. It has been moved and seconded that we, the Montgomery County Board of Education, ask Dr. Thomas Weiss, State Superintendent of Education, to provide this board his recommendations to move this school system to excellence. And also to provide the necessary support from the State Department of Education to accomplish this goal. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. The motion carries with seven votes. Thank you. Superintendent?
Yes, the next part is the strategic plan that I've been passing up. Once everybody gets the strategic plan, if you remember, we've been working on this for months with noon AM. And we'd like to have a meeting next Tuesday, a workshop for the board to go over our strategic plan. We think this is next Tuesday, sorry, next Tuesday, at noon to go over our strategic plan. We think this plan differs quite a bit from the last plan, which had a lot of emphasis on resources and facilities. This plan has the emphasis more on academic achievement and moving, I believe, this district in the exact direction that Board Member Dean talked about. But I want you to have time to review it beforehand. Hopefully, some of you, I know, have already committed to next Tuesday. We'd like to spend a couple of hours with Dr. Jackson, Catherine Jackson, going over this and explaining exactly what we are proposing. This is a draft, so it's very much something that we would like to talk about and discuss.
Let me ask you a question. Is it possible we can put these two hours on the table?
Thank you, that's what I was going to ask you. We, it's impossible to make every week, Barbara, it's not fair.
Well, the problem, the problem is with Dr. Jackson's schedule. I'm trying to accommodate her schedule, I'm not sure she can come to eight. I have to go back and check, I know she can do the nine, I'm not sure about the eight. But I will go back and check.
I just feel like we are constantly having meetings, and although I'm dedicated to moving our district forward, it just seems like we could plan around the set meetings that we have currently, I'm sure what officially.
Yeah, and I said, it really kind of depends on her schedule, I'm trying to see what you can do.
So as it stands now, unless we hear from you, it is October the first at what time?
I will try to see if it's the eight, oh, it should be.
Okay, fantastic.
You?
Here.
You. Let me just clarify this, does this mean that you want to have this meeting, the workshop, two hours before, as far as we're commending it all?
You're saying this is going to take two hours to do?
I think it's going to take more than an hour to go through the strategic plan. Because there's, you know, you have the indicators that you're looking for too. So I think it's probably going to take more than an hour. We also looked at changing the mission statement, division statement, all those things. So I think it's going to take more than an hour to go through this.
But, Mr. Johnson, are you going to be able to do that with your work scheduling on that, Miss Tyler?
It's, it's really tough, but...
We might need to do it where it's more convenient, but your work scheduling, I mean, no, yes, but you're in the middle of a district race that's going to be on October the eighth, so we, we've got a lot of board members with a lot on their plate right now.
Well, if I do another day, it will not be on the board day. I can look for another day. I don't have a problem with that, but it won't be on the eight.
Well, it's never going to be. I remember always going to have something going on. But I will say that I'm very much looking forward to this, because I know we're going to have a lot of people on this room and this board, and lots of time to do this. So I want to make sure that we find time, that everyone can spend time and really grasp it, because it is very, and this is a five-year plan. I think I'll have it, I'll see you in the meeting. We do. And I'll do everything that I can to do that.
I'll be there, but I think...
I do know she's available the next day to nine, but, um...
No, I'll be back.
I, so I would be available in that week. And the first thing is, you know, October the seventh, I think all of us, you know, we'll be down to Renaissance. I remember after six or seven, down to Renaissance. For that entire week, I'm going to make sure to be with you. Yeah, I'm telling you, it's a very, very difficult week, and if I don't take over that...
Let's find some times when Miss Jackson's there, or maybe you've heard of her, that might be more, and see if she's in, but they keep calling her.
But right now, we're definitely not doing eight. And the ninth doesn't work with people.
Well, we are tied up already with board commitment on the sixth and the seventh. So we do have that already in the board.
Well, I will, I will check on six.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any questions or comments around the strategic plan? If not, our next board meeting is at 12 noon on October eighth. The committee of the whole, it won't be that special, okay? We won't do, we won't do the strategic plan, okay? Committee of the whole, October eighth, 12 noon. Tuesday, October 22, the regular board meeting here at five o'clock. If there is no additional business to come before the board, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.